Anderson?
Yes.
That, Diselonjic?
Yes.
Simeh?
Yes. Approval of the July fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, meeting minutes. Without a motion. So moved. Sorry. Any questions? Your call?
Anderson?
Yes.
That, Diselonjic?
Yes.
Yes.
Two point one, student success in action, Springboro High School, BPA National finalist, digital media program, and WCCC satellite program.
President, members of the board, thank you. One of the things that I wanted to do was something I think called student success in action, an opportunity for Springboro students, whether they're pre-k all the way to seniors and actually to graduates who we here tonight who have done some outstanding things as students here at Springboro schools. And tonight, we have a group of five students who had some amazing accomplishments this summer. And at this point, Kyle, Martin, our high school principal is going to introduce the program.
Thank you, Mr. Strachan. Students sitting here before us are part of the satellite programs that we've partnered with with the Warren County Career Center. We have Mrs. Jennifer Kennard and Mr. Justin Dieter. Mr. Dieter teaches our DMA programs, and Mrs. Kennard does our computer sciences and fundamental systems with the computer system. So I'm happy that they were taking time to see them come out. We actually host, at Springboro High School, we host the BPA regional seventeen awards ceremony every year at the high school. So that's something I'm lucky enough to start off with a little bit of speech involving all of the students from the other area career centers as well. So we hold those as far as regionals at the high school. And we have a lot of students that are participating in our satellite programs with our college leading away STEM programs, digital media arts, and then our computer sciences. So I'll let Mr. Dieter and Mrs. Kennard talk about the students here, and then we'll allow the students just to talk about their experience in the state and national competitions and how it has prepared them for future successes.
So I'll just, can I introduce the students since I know they have some comments they want to make? So we have Eli Dada and Nicholas Duncan. They are actually seniors this year. They competed at BPA last year with our computer animation team. And then Jake Brown, he was in our digital media production. He was a junior last year, so senior this year, so he's went to nationals with us. And then Ryan Raller, he's had a lot of success with our BPA, his website design team. He's actually a graduate, so he's on DUC, and he's also had some internship opportunities because of our program. So I'm gonna let them kind of talk a little bit. You really like to start?
I actually prepared a little written thing here detailing some of the things that she touched on. Sure. So I called this "How what I did in high school has already made me successful." I'm a class of twenty sixteen Springboro High School graduate that took a course from Jennifer Kennard while in high school that changed my life for the better in many ways. When I was in high school, I knew that I wanted to put forth more effort and dedicate myself to learning more skills, gaining more real world experience, so that once I was out of high school, I could be ready to move on to the next chapter of my life. One of the best things that I did while in high school to prepare myself for the real world was enrolling in the information technology programming assistance development course offered by the Career Center as a satellite program at the high school. One of the things that I loved the most about this class's class was the way that it was designed to empower students to actually learn by experiencing the things that they were working on. This was valuable because the course had a focus on the career technical education along with the actual skill-based learning. Because we are connected with Sinclair Community College, we also have the opportunity to actually earn college course credit while we were in high school. This has already, I know for a fact, saved me at least a thousand dollars as I go in signing up for classes and things, not even counting any of the materials that I won't have to purchase now, such as textbooks and more. Also, while I was in Kennard's class, I began to develop my leadership skills by participating in a group called the Inter Alliance of Greater Cincinnati. I was a member of the Leadership Council for a couple of years, and as my final year, I actually served as the Director of Web building. Thanks to Kennard's program in introducing me to the organization when I was a sophomore, I believe it was, I was actually able to gain many years of real-life experience even just as a high schooler when I was leading students helping to change their lives for the better with IT. And one of the Inter Alliance's best-known programs is actually their summer internship program, where high school students are actually connected with IT-related positions all around the Cincinnati area and even all the way up to here, with startups, organizations, and even some Fortune 500 and 100 companies like Proger, General Electric, Indian Procter and Gamble. Partly thanks to my career technical education and skills that I'd been able to build up while I was in Kennard's class, I felt ready to actually start applying to positions through this program with a polished resume, LinkedIn account, online presence, you know the deal. I landed an interview with Procter and Gamble but decided it wasn't actually the right fit for me. So I kind of moved on and went with a position with the University of Cincinnati and their Information Technologies Department, which is actually amazing because that's where I, as she mentioned, I'm going to be attending college. So I get to work where I'm attending, which I thought was an awesome opportunity. I was given this position out of a hundred other applicants, and they told me that because of some of the credentials that I'd worked on and earned and the skills that I had built with her program, that is, those are all some of the bigger reasons that they picked me over other people. And actually, after their summer internships are over, usually these students, most of the time choose to move on to focus on their course where back in high school, or even go to different positions with different internships that they still choose. But I actually have kept my position, and this is my second year working with UCIT, and I still love it, and they still want me, and they want to keep me because of all the great skills that I've built up while in high school with these programs. So the message here is really simple, and it's that these programs that we have offered at the high school, they're just outstanding and excellent, and that's coming from a student that had to deal with it every day, you know? I love it, and I love what it's done for me as a student and now a person going into the real world.
Can I ask a question? Was that an internship that you did for your college resume, or was that a paid summer internship? Or what was your purpose in getting the internship?
Sort of yes and yes, really.
Oh, wow.
The internship program that Inter Alliance has, you actually get a starting ten dollars an hour rate as a paid intern, but it's actually real-world stuff, too. You're not just running for coffee or anything like that. I actually sat down with the CIO, Nelson Vincent, got to know him on a first-name basis, and we worked through some of the big problems universities experiencing right now and figuring out how to solve that with some of the skills that I learned and built up on my own and with these programs. So it's a really great all-around experience, and I'm happy to still be there.
Were you able to use any advantage of like your scholarships?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah. Wow, that's awesome. Okay, thank you, congrats.
Thank you.
Jake Brown? Hello, I am a senior at Springboro High School. I am one of the only members out of these that is actually enrolled in Mr. Dieter's digital media arts program. And I'd just like to say that what started as me being a sophomore and hearing, oh, there's this really cool teacher who will play video games after you get through your project, and your project type of like, what started as that has very, very quickly has very, very quickly turned into a growing and burning passion for a very quickly growing career field in graphic design, something that interests me and there is a demand for in the market, something that I can use in my life and actually have. Before I took this class, if you had asked me what I wanted to do with my life, I would have not. The second I finished that intro class, I knew exactly. I had it all planned out. I knew everything I wanted to do. And what that class has really done is helped kind of simulate what working in that field is really like. You do curtsies, we have deadlines, we have, you know, things we have to account for and, you know, changes that we have to adapt for. One of the things we did, like for business professionals of America, one of the projects that I, many projects that I did, I actually ended up staying up late into the night, about eight hours, I stayed after school five days a week, gave it everything I had, just because, you know, timelines and group members, things don't work out. So that's really prepared me for a career path where things are uncertain, you know, things can happen that you need to be able to buckle down and work hard and have it work out, work out and work. And what I did for BPA, I ended up going to a nationals for traditional publishing, which the competition was they sit you down in this room, you have ninety minutes to complete about a week's worth of work, really. And what the class is taught me to do is we've been able to make those changes and really adapt to what requires you, adapt to really grace under pressure and just what the career feels like. And that class accurately, I feel, recreated that for students who are interested in this field, who want to know what it would be, what would it be like to type in this graphic design? The class perfectly is that. I feel like I'm prepared for it. So. Thank you.
My name is Nicholas Duncan.
And I'm Eli Dada.
We, we were a part of Mrs. Kennard's programming class during our junior year last year.
During that time, we really found our niche of this program on what we wanted to do and what we're working to it, such as BPA, various missions work.
So the whole long journey just from getting started during September, September, all the way through May, where it really was. So this whole long process developing our, our computer animation, which we submitted to Business Professionals of America for the whole competition, very long, in some places hard, but overall a very, very great learning experience.
Now, what we use for this, like data is used on specific programs to create this animation and get us to these areas. So
These, um, led us to regionals. Three local way to come.
So all the way from regionals, there wasn't a lot of competition for computer animation, and it's kind of easy to see why. It takes a lot of effort, a lot of thinking, research, in order to put all of these different pieces that you need to make a success together. We took a lot of time, even personal time. We got together, organized dates for get-togethers so we could just iron out this project with the best quality that we can possible.
And even a shout out to our teachers who let us stay like Jake after school quite a bit, just so we can iron all the changes that we need to, and really get hands-on, one-on-one conversation on what we should do for this.
I want you forward, stand back up here. If you would, stand here beside me. You know, Business Professionals of America is an organization, and it helped me, Career Center people, I believe it's over two hundred thousand students in America in this organization, twenty-three states. And so they went to a regional level, southwest Ohio. This region is the most competitive Business Professionals of America region in the state. They then go to state. You must win the state of Ohio to go to national. You must place first out of over, if I'm not mistaken, a hundred schools in Ohio that are in Business Professionals. They won the state from Springboro, Ohio, and they went to the nationals and competed and placed in the top ten, correct? Placed in the top ten in the national competition. These guys did a phenomenal job. They represented Warren County Career Center and Springboro High School very well, and we are really proud of you. Before I say any other, any other questions for these guys?
Can you just give a, just a quick synopsis of how the Warren County Career Center and Springboro Schools work together to?
Well, we work with them two different ways. We have juniors and seniors that go to the Warren County Career Center, where they go there either all day or half-day. They go there all day, they're taking their academics, they're taking career technical therapy at that campus location, either at main campus or at the Great Tree Health Science Academy, where students are learning health careers. Four students go there half-day for career technical and then come here for their academics. Some students choose to do that. These folks are in programs called satellite programs. We have a few of them here at the school that was explained earlier, where they can still take the high-level Warren County Career Center program but do academics here. There's no travel back and forth. And so years ago, and I would say, and helped me out Warren County here, probably in the last fifteen years is when the satellite push really started. Because more and more kids going to the schools in the state of Ohio, especially here in Warren County, where there's a big enrollment influx in our schools, the Career Center just can't handle all of the kids that they want to go to programs here. School's not big enough. So they started putting programs in the comprehensive high schools so that they could equip the lab. Warren County Career Center owns the teachers, pays for the teachers, pays for the equipment, and the students take the program here, but they're still part of the Springboro culture, the epic culture that we have here. And so really, those are the few ways.
Yeah, I sit on the Warren County Career Center board, so I think not everybody understands that. It's amazing having a program where we work together with the Career Center to benefit students and these fine gentlemen and these teachers or examples of that. So that's all I wanted everybody to know.
And you know, one of the things that I want to do every board meeting, whether we have every regular scheduled board meeting, we're going to bring students here for the board members to see some of the student things that are happening, whether it's, whether it's at Claire Creek, whether it's at Intermountain, whether it's at the high school or at the Career Center with Springboro students. They went to nationals, it was late May, early June, late May. So this was a program that happened near the end of last year. We want to bring it here at the start of the school year. We have some other programs that are going to be coming right away the next week. We have another high school program, hopefully a younger age program coming with the science district. We're hoping maybe have two presentations per board meeting. So guys, congratulations. Here's what we're going to do. I don't have a presentation that you're going to take home with you, but here's what we have. I have some books, and these are good books. These are Mitch Albom and Andy Andrus stuff. Now, these books inside, Mitch Albom For One More Day, national bestseller book, it's a great book that we already have a couple in our library, but what it says on the inside is that this book is donated to the Springboro High School Library on behalf of, say your name again?
Eli Dada.
See, I couldn't remember that, so you got it, good job. And there's a line under that. I'm going to have you sign that. And it says, "For your presentation at Springboro Schools Board of Education, being due on August eleventh, two thousand sixteen." So this book you'll sign, it'll go in our library at the high school. Every time a student checks this book out and they want to read it, they're going to say, hey, this book is here because of you. And so because of your academic excellence, you are giving back to the Margaret of High School Library with a book like this that you're going to sign. So gentlemen?
Who's high school?
What did I say? Guys? I knew I was going to do that. I didn't say real-time.
We were going, I'm going to let you go.
It's Springboro High School Library. So guys, what I'm going to have you do, I'm going to have you sign each book, we're going to take it. And one more time, how about a round of applause?
Yeah.
And, and any other questions for these guys as they're signing the books real quick?
I just had a quick question for the two that presented at the end. Did you guys have any experience with programming when you got started? So students can get started with this?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, one of the things I think as a teacher, especially in my, in my field, I always tell kids, you know, they come in and I get everything, web development, game development, coding, and I always tell them like, animation is not my thing. They learn it all in the room. I mean, I, I couldn't teach them that because that's not my background, you know, programming databases. But that's what I love about the program is they come in, they learn the basics of programming a database, but then they kind of flourish from there wherever they want to go. And, and one of the big feedbacks I get from a lot of my graduating students who come back, you know, after that first year of college, the one thing I always thank for is allowing them or kind of forcing them to go out and research stuff in their room. Because I gave them, when you go out to the real world, figure it out for yourself. I mean, I can't sit and teach you everything. And that's one of the things that, like BPA and everything is really nice because they get that exposure to figuring it out in the room, so.
That's awesome, and I've heard fabulous things about the teachers from Warren County Career Center. My boys have had Project Leadways, Mr. Robert, fabulous, and I've heard fabulous things about both of you guys, so thank you. You're doing a great job with our kids.
Now, for those that came for this, students, teachers, the board meeting doesn't get any more exciting than just happening. So you guys will be able to leave, but before you do, I want to get to pitch with four students with our five members of the board. Karen, if you want to find a place for them.
Let's have you guys. Let's have all of you just stand up and sit back. Okay, the students can go up to the screen.
One in between.
Yeah.
It's okay, go ahead. I'm It's okay, here, I'll go this way. There you go, now you won't be on.
And then board members come up just a little bit closer.
There you go, wow. Wow, she's done that before. That's front page stuff. All good? Oh, one more, one more.
This goes to social media.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. This one, this one. Thank you, folks. All right, that's with that, is our first student success in action.
You guys have. Good. Thank you. I'd like to. You sure you don't want to stay?
All right. Anybody from Springboro Education Association? Classified employees, Springboro. I don't think we had any pre-arranged public. Any public participation on an agenda item? Move on, convene to our work session. For the public, as we go through these, as we finish each item, if there are any questions, you may ask them at that point before we go on to the next item. First one is committee reports.
You finished your report? I don't think so, but I haven't had any.
I'm kind of particular with my, yes, because I went up with the new website and has the committees listed, but it doesn't have any dates on meetings. Are they not scheduled or are they, I didn't see them.
Here's what we're looking at. I actually talked to the administrative team about committees and which committees, where we're at with them, and which ones are necessary, which one should continue. And if there are any that we need to come to you and say, you know what, this, this nut's happened, or this has run its course. So hopefully by the, by the next board meeting during this time, I want to come to you, A, where do you keep them all, or here's a suggestion of maybe one you don't need or one I want to add, and then we start talking about it.
Perfect. I just didn't want to make, I just wanted to try to.
And, and I know that this is the right time, Mr. President, to, or you probably wait until January one, and just sort of sit on committees, which I don't have. So it's all right.
You finish them off, you should.
Unless there's a new committee, then you need to.
You'd like to do that, Lisa? I just want to make sure I have any.
All right, three point three, capital conference and delegate discussion. Now, I have to tell you, I will not be here that week because I'm probably in PumaCon for my fortieth anniversary. Is that acceptable?
Not fair, but it's acceptable.
I won't be the delegate this year, all right?
All right, well, you got out of that.
I know, I think I volunteered.
All right.
I volunteer this year.
Well, capital conference, it's obviously, it is November thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, so thirteenth is a Sunday. As far as the delegate piece, there'll be a delegate meeting at eight AM on Monday, the fourteenth, just as a business briefing, and then the actual annual business meeting will be at two thirty on the fourteenth, so it's later that day. We also have to, we'll have to nominate a delegate and an alternate delegate, so we'll do that at the next board meeting. So I kind of just wanted to let you guys know that it was out there to be thinking about it. So obviously, if he's already operating through the delegate, we'll have to figure out who the alternate delegate is, and then we'll bring it up for a vote, a nomination, and then a vote at the next board meeting. And then just kind of be thinking, I sent on board docs also, but I also can mail to each of you the actual packet of what all, what's all going on there, and then you'll just have to let me know pretty soon if you're going to be attending, so that way I can get the reservation, even accommodate schedule for the small window of time in order to rest. So that's pretty much all I had for the capital conference, so thank you for volunteering, that's awesome, and we'll bring it next time for that, and then whoever wants to be.
Looking forward to it.
Jamie and Darren, if you want to be the
Thank you, Darren.
Alternate delegate.
Thank you, Darren.
All right, three point four, courier.
Quote unquote.
Courier service.
I'll just give you a brief update. We did have Viftery in protest, like, early last month, and basically state that the company who was doing our courier service before has filed bankruptcy and is no longer in business, and also due to some regulatory changes in banking rules in the regulation, they're not going to provide us with a Vifery anymore. We were paying it as a fee to the, to the bank, but they're no longer going to provide us with a courier. So I reached out to several courier services, and unfortunately, we're not having a whole lot of luck because of the window that we have in order for deposits to be picked up each day. They're on routes, so there's not very many routes that will accommodate the timeframe that we have to pick up the deposits. So in the meantime, we're having to get by on our own, and we've got some things shuffling around. We have some things in the works that we're looking at, and going to be meeting with John to see if maybe we can maybe utilize somebody internally as long as, you know, liability insurance and all that goes through. So we're looking at some options right now, but right now we're taking care of everything ourselves, but it is something that, just to be aware of, that we do not have a courier. We were hoping that if possible, we could work it into with our SRO. The police have offered an escort, but they cannot actually be the ones to provide the service, so just to let you guys know that we're looking for that.
So if we have to have an internal person, then we can have the escort and have like three minutes.
They've actually done a pass for taking money after escorting events, especially football basketball with large gates, they might have to take every time.
So how often is this, is like a daily?
Every day. ORC says you have to deposit money within twenty-four hours, so we can't have money on hand, so it's, they go to every single building every single day, so. So, yeah, we'll be working on that. I just want to let you guys know it was out there.
Three point five, Northrop Grumman is it, grant to support STEM work. Andrew's not here, so just take that one.
You know, that's not, and I'll tell you what we might end up doing, we may push that on to escort, and I apologize for that.
I understand, I didn't have Trump to not.
I brought up Andrew's.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll all see.
Any other business? Okay, we'll move on to the treasures.
Congrats. We have several donations. We have a donation for the Springboro Athletic Boosters, seven thousand one ninety-seven, to various sports teams under the content, that's the boys' golf, girls' golf, softball, girls' softball, football. We have a donation of ninety-five hundred to the touchdown program, it's going to the football program from the touchdown club. Approval of a twenty-five hundred dollar nonetheless donation, also a one hundred dollar donation from Proger to the high school cost country team.
Okay, you have a motion to accept all these donations, four point one, three, four point four.
I have a question on this.
We may push that on to escort, and I apologize for that. I brought up Andrew's.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other business? Okay, we'll move on to the treasures.
All right. We have several donations. We have a donation for the Springboro Athletic Boosters, $7,197, to various sports teams under the content. That's the boys' golf, girls' golf, softball, girls' softball, football. We have a donation of $95 to the Touchdown Program. It's going to the football program from the Touchdown Club. Approval of a $2,500 anonymous donation. Also, a $100 donation from Bravur to the high school cost country team.
Okay, we have a motion to accept all these donations, 4.1, 4.4.
I have a question on this. I'm not comfortable with 4.3. And the reason is that with the anonymous donation, we have a policy, 3214, that states, and this is nothing with Mr. Schrayer whatsoever, but we have a policy that states professional staff members can't accept gifts over $25. So with this, I understand that the board can override that. But I think we have a policy in place for a reason. And I'm struggling with the idea of accepting a donation that is not for kids. So I feel like any donation that we as a board should be accepting should be to further the education of kids and not for an adult. So once again, this is nothing for Mr. Schrayer at all, at all, at all. I get it, but moving expensive, or expensive. But I just struggle with that personally. And I understand that it's a community anonymous donation, but I personally just struggle with that when we have the policy in place and we're not allowing other organization, other staff members to accept a donation over $25. I think we're opening up the door to potentially sporting teams to ask that we, that we accept donations for coaches, for teachers. I just don't think it's the wisest thing for us to do that we accept donations that are for adults. So, I'd like to pull that one out and go down that one specifically for myself. I don't want to vote that all five together. I just personally have struggled with that.
Does that fall under the same?
No, actually, the resolution that the attorney provided us is what allows that to be, the resolution allows for that to occur. So, I already went through it with the attorney just to ensure that everything was done legitimately according to our policies. And that's how she came up with this resolution.
Which I agree, it's not, it's not that it's illegal. It's not that it's illegal. I get it, but we had a lawyer look it over. But I feel like if we're not allowing staff members to get anything over $25, I struggle that we're having another staff member that's getting $2,500. I just, if I were a staff member, even if, even if there was a resolution legally setting we can do this, I don't think that it is setting a good precedent. So I, I can't support that, even if it's legal. I just don't think it's a, it's something that I want to, it's not a precedent I want set.
But we have to have a motion to.
Yeah, I might as well do a motion, but I'll have to do it all outside of this because it's already set up. So, we have to entertain a motion, and it would have to be seconded.
To separate.
To separate.
We have a motion to separate 4.3 from the other items in the treasures report. Is there a second?
Second.
Volcom.
The motion is to.
To, to separate. To, to, to. Anderson? Thad?
Yes.
Balanque?
Yes.
Lunt?
Yes.
Stuckey?
No.
So then hold on, 4.1, 4.2, and 4.4.
We have a motion to accept the donations 4.1, 2, and 4. Second.
Second. Anderson?
Yes.
Thad?
Yes.
Balanque?
Yes.
Lunt?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
4.4, a motion to approve 4.3.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve 4.3. Is there a second? Second.
Volcom?
Volcom.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thad?
No.
Balanque?
Yes.
Lunt?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Superintendent's report, not much there.
No, just one item, Mr. President. And we had sent out a contract earlier in board docs with additional amounts that we already talked about before. And that amount is for basic services with the name of the county ESC. That was taken out based upon past conversations because the basic services in the name of the county ESC, we don't use. We use these others. And these have come, thanks to our special ed department, in conversation with the name of the county ESC. And these are all services obtained by our students. Anything else, Kim? I asked for your approval on that.
Can I say something on that? I appreciate the superintendent of this ESC stepping up and really giving us what we need here when we ask him about that. Because when we asked him about that service, he could easily have told us that we needed the full $16,000 amount. And he came back and said, "For your district, I think it'd be better to go for this and use it for your gifted." And that just, that said a lot to me, that he really looked at what our needs are and guided us in that direction. It didn't bring them as much money, but is really going to help support those services. So, that was just a cool thing, as I saw, Ken, you did a great job of going back and forth and really figuring out what our needs are for that. So, you know, I looked through what the different, you know, what services they're providing, and you really see exactly what we're using. And you know that we're using under one of those. So, I appreciate Mr. Schrayer's doing that for us.
He's a real serious, right?
Yeah. Just really built a lot of trust in my mind watching him do that.
So we had a motion, yeah. Is there a motion to accept it?
Someone?
Second.
Second.
Volcom?
Anderson?
Yes.
Thad?
Yes.
Balanque?
Yes.
Lunt?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Executive Director of Student Services, 6.1.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I bring forth from the Special Education Department tonight quite a few of our educational contracts. These are two full contracts. Some are for students to go out and get their educational services outside of our community schools. And some that we have exterior personnel such as nurses and other supports for our special ed students who need supports within the school. So at this time, I bring forth approval for those contracts in order to get near 2016, '17 school to study.
I have a question on that. How many were we able to bring back with our new, like, how's the thing that is going with our new services there? How many were we able to bring back in-house with that?
Currently, we have three students. One is newly remunerated or missured that we were able to place in a very nice placement that could be the same, but it's all in our school. And we have two right now at the high school, I don't know, in that social communications class.
Awesome. And how many do we, did we bring in from other districts?
I believe we have two at Dennis and two at the high school. Actually, three.
Five?
Yeah. Awesome, awesome. Okay, good job. Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept, to 6.1? Second.
Second.
Volcom?
Anderson?
Yes.
Thad?
Yes.
Balanque?
Yes.
Lunt?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes. 7.1, Director of Instructions Report, approval of novels.
Yes, we only have one item tonight. We have, I believe, six novels that have been brought to us. There was actually one that had been pulled a while back. And these six have been approved and ready for your report.
Any questions? Now, a motion to, second. Volcom?
Anderson?
Yes.
Thad?
Yes.
Balanque?
Yes.
Lunt?
Yes.
Yes. Executive Director of Operations Report.
He's got.
Okay, you have to.
Mr. President, members of the board, for your consideration tonight, approval of our normal personnel items. You'll see there's several certified and classified resignations, extended days for our new athletic director. He was working, he had the ground running in those last two weeks of July. He worked his tail off getting a lot of stuff done that needed to be done. So we want to make sure he's compensated for those. You've got several of our new hires as early as last night, about 8:00 PM. We got one of the second grade teachers in here, and so we've been working right up till the end. And then several classified personnel, supplemental personnel, and then several leaves of absences that are on there. Special thanks to Mindy Tischler. She worked her tail off this time of year and just, there's no way we could do it without her. Next is 8.2, approval of the Washington DC advisor stipend. For years, Cheryl Winter did that here at the junior high, and she spent a lot of her own time and a lot of her own work doing it. And she, of course, she's one of our outstanding tech folks now that is stationed at our district office. Last year, they struggled a little bit with the advisor there, so we want to put one in place that's at a reasonable cost. And so that's included here for your approval. Approval of band camp staff. Of course, band camp's already been done, but these are the people that, that worked at the band camp, whether they're volunteers or our own folks.
Well, if it's already done, we have to pay them?
We, well, no, it's, yes.
Okay.
Unfortunately. But, and they were all fingerprinted, they were all background checked. Approval of payment lieu of transportation. These are the schools that, even though there's a lot of kids that go there, there's not a kid, a lot of, not a lot of students that ride the bus for various reasons. So, the, the state, Ohio Department of Education allows for us to pay them an lieu of check at the end of the year. Last year, it was somewhere in the $250 range per student that went there. So, the state reimburses us for all of these that we approved. So this is just a flow-through and we have to do it to, to be able to get those approved. Approved, 8.5, approval of our bus stops. We went from 600 some bus stops to 400 some bus stops this year. So, we, we consolidate a lot of them. We will have some stressors and we'll probably, you know, we'll be looking at some as we go along. But, you know, one of the complaints that we've had since even before I was here is the length of our routes. Some of our students that go to our public school here in Springboro are on the bus for hour, hour and a half. And those are long routes. So, you, you only have a certain number of ways to try to speed those up. And one of those is consolidating stops. So a bus isn't stopping 100 times along the one mile stretch of road. So, that's, that's our goal here, is to try to speed that along.
Do the sense for where I would be now.
I, I don't know, I'd have to look. I, I'll be honest with you, I didn't, I haven't had. Yes. We, we'll be letting you know that. So, especially after we, you know, because especially the first few days of school, everything's behind. We weren't too bad today. So, we, we were, we were, this was, knock on wood. Yeah, today was one of the best starting first days I've seen in transportation. They've done a really, really good job.
Social media was very quiet.
Yeah. Thank goodness. 8.6, approval of boys and girls varsity and junior varsity lacrosse as a district sport. That's a little bit of change from what we talked about the last meeting a month ago. But, you know, Austin Rhodes and, and the folks at lacrosse and I sat down and we had a, a nice chat about how we would get through this and work things out. And so, the folks with Springboro Lacrosse has made it a good, we, we'll have a good transition for this next year. So.
Is the change adding JP?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it was just going to be varsity, but we're, we're still adding them without that additional cost to the district.
Right, right.
If I can add, you know, during the first nine days on the job, received several calls, you know, from parents, whether they were positive or negative, or questions, or different things. Some of those happened to be in transportation. In every single case, I was able to go to Mr. Pinnell's, he knew the background, why we had done it, what the answer was. And we were able to answer every parent question fully and to their satisfaction. I just want to say publicly, I appreciate Mr. Pinnell's work with that and all the research for me. Thank you.
Couple things. I think the, on the personal items with Austin Rhodes, did you bring that up? I think that was a good idea.
Yeah.
I thought he, he's been here, he was here a long time before he actually needed to be.
Well, that's where, you know, he had no clue that he was going to, we were going to go back and back pay him for two weeks. And he worked full-time for two weeks.
Oh, yeah.
Just because that needed to get done to get us going with the sports. And, you know, he had some tough things to work through in those two weeks. And he just did it because he needed to get on the job and get it done. And he didn't care that he had, whether he was going to get paid, he didn't know that he was going to get paid. I was just so impressed with everything that I saw from him in July. And when I pulled up the contract and it said August 1st, I was like, he's not even really supposed to be here yet. So that's where I even got bored and just said, what do you guys think about trying to go back and pay him for those two weeks? Because he was here the entire time. So, I, I've just been so impressed. And I was, I have two fall athletes and I was at the fall parent meeting and the stuff that he covered with us and just his presence has, he's done a fabulous job. Fabulous job. Right from the get-go.
Made a good decision.
Yeah, absolutely.
My other question, Mr. Martin, how did band camp go?
It was phenomenal. Everything went well, huh? Smooth sailing.
Good. I don't know if Mr. Schrayer knows the background, maybe confirm.
Yes.
Glad to hear that. Yep, good. All right, do we have a motion to accept items 8.1 through 8.6? Second.
Second.
Volcom?
Anderson?
Yes.
Thad?
Yes.
Balanque?
Yes.
Lunt?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes. 9.1, approval of superintendent's contract, whatever that word is.
Then. This is just a, there was one line in his contract that was sent, that when we sent it to STRS, they said, "I don't think that's what you meant." And then so I have to reclarify, and they said, "Yeah, you want to take that line out." So. So we took the line out and that's what this is. It's just a line.
Is there a motion to approve that? Second.
Second.
Volcom?
Anderson?
Yes.
Thad?
Yes.
Balanque?
Yes.
Lunt?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes. Comments or questions from board members? Mr. Lunt?
Just want to say thanks to everyone, all the teachers, administrators, everyone for a great first day. And hopefully that will carry on to the rest of the year. Have a great one.
Mr. Balanque?
Yeah, a couple of other things for a second. Just to echo what Mr. Lunt said, that welcome back to everybody. It's, it's always an exciting time of year. And I'm just happy that it seems like a very good first day back. And just looking forward to another, another great year. So I just appreciate everyone's hard work to, to get ready for that. And it's, it's hopefully going to be a really good year. Just a couple of other things I wanted to highlight. Dave talked about earlier, this is your first official board meeting. I mean, you're with us when we wrote down the contract, this is the first official one. So, Mr. Volcom, so good to have you aboard. I know you've had a busy few years, but you're still here, so it's a good sign. So I just, again, also looking forward to working with you as we get into the school year. And the last thing I just wanted to say, I referenced it earlier, that the new website is up. I know there was a lot of hard work that went into that and Mr. Rosa did a lot of ad work. And I've heard nothing but great feedback from parents and folks that I've been in contact with and a little of that. Yeah. So I just want to say thanks to everyone involved. And obviously, you know, it's more than just caring, but I know that you played it into a part of that. So thank you very much. I think it's a great tool and resource for our district.
Mr. Thad?
That's also what I was going to highlight, just it was very cool because at the pool, I was having some conversations with people. And they were talking to me about the website. And it was actually teachers from other districts. And they were asking me, where did, you know, what the company was or whatever that we used it. Because they, they have kids in the district but work in other districts. And they were so impressed with it in the, how, what you could do with the app, what you could do on the website, and just how user-friendly it was. So it's very cool because there, I told her, she, she set the bar so low the first night when she released it. I was just all over it. And I'm like, okay, if I can figure this out, a lot of people can figure this out because I'm not really tech savvy. And to me, I mean, there's a few glitches that I can't figure out how, on the app, how to do it. But overall, I just feel like it's very user-friendly and the parents are going to figure this out. So, kudos to that team that made that happen. And I think the apps, you know, it could have hit a lot of bumps and it didn't. So especially with, you know, it happened at the same time that we brought Mr. Schrayer in and we started off, we kicked off the school year and brought all the teachers back. So there's a lot of things that could have happened at that time, but it really could ran smoothly. So, that's awesome. And welcome to everybody. It was cool seeing. So that's awesome, and welcome to everybody. It was cool seeing, being in my kids' schools today and dropping off stuff, and seeing the excitement there, and the teachers just, there was that energy there, which is just always fun to see. So, excited to be back.
Mr. Anderson?
Welcome to Dan, and welcome to all the new teachers. You know, we have a couple new administrative years. So welcome to everybody. Mr. Pinnell, if you get a call from a woman on Scotch pine, just don't pay any attention to it. First thing, first thing my daughter tells me is, Matthew, now I have to walk down to the corner. I said, are you serious? Four houses down, and you're gonna tell me?
Sorry. I know, that's-
I want to call John.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I will. You're free to say whatever you want.
That it? Okay. Once again, welcome, Dan. Glad to have you here. Good luck to all the administrators and the teachers, everybody in sports staff. First day was success, from what I understand. Somebody called me. Then, you know, as we go through this, I, I usually do the update on the athletics, you know, as I get them from coaches and stuff. So don't have anything to report. I know tennis and golf and stuff like that's in full swing. Football, since I'm kind of related to that or working with that, that was a screaming Saturday here at home against Dakota. West, and then the following Friday is our, what they call foundation game, I believe, with Pickwa, where we ask for donations, you know, going to a certain group that, that needs. And then the following Friday is Pat Mason, I believe, for the first, first game of the year, so.
Where are the donations going?
Do we know where they're going this year yet?
No.
I don't know. But they, they ask for a donation, and it's, you know, usually goes to a good cause. So I don't know what I should find out. So are there any announcements or future considerations?
I have one, Mr. President. I mean, it's, it's a little ways down the line, but it's good to talk about September twenty-second is one of our board meetings. Same time, we have Thursday night football home against Centerville. So I want to propose a board meeting date change if we could. I'm not sure if you got your calendars with you there. I believe in the past when we've changed some of the dates, we moved back to either previous Tuesday or the following Tuesday. September twenty-seventh works better for me, but I could do either one. Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, to the following Tuesday. Unless you just want to cancel the meeting. Unless we, I cancel the meeting, we'll see what we can do. So if we can move the twenty-second then? We want to move back to the twentieth? Very well, make the twentieth.
Is that Tuesday?
Yeah. All right. So the twenty-second meeting, we move back to the twentieth.
Hold on, what, the twenty-seventh would be the twentieth?
No, no. The board meeting was scheduled for September twenty-seventh.
Oh, it's just not, we're gonna be back Tuesday. That's, all right, I'm with you.
We've got two first dates.
Right, two, yes. So away at Beaver Creek?
Well, we'll look at that, too. August twenty-fifth. Could we move that also then to the twenty-third?
What's the twenty-fifth?
Okay. Or the thirtieth? So August twenty-fifth, could we move it to August thirtieth, possibly? August thirtieth?
My birthday cake.
Oh, what's wrong with that?
All right.
The school board meeting will be on the thirtieth?
Thirtieth, yep.
Well, that's, do we want to, we don't have a board meeting that's scheduled for the second, you would, John, for the Beaver Creek, Thursday night, twenty-ninth?
It's the twenty-ninth, so that doesn't conflict with that, correct.
That one was right after the year.
Right.
In fact, Thursday night of the board meeting, I have experienced that. Yep, that's correct. For the record, I mean, I mean, in public, I mean, nine days here, it's been awesome. We, we've been able to see a lot of great staff members, administrators. And, you know, we talked about opening day for students today, and it's been happening. Students here are every day for sports practices. They're here for cheerleading practices. We had last Thursday, the only school in this area that brings the entire freshman class in for an orientation. And what Kyle and his team put together, phenomenal day. Five hundred and twenty-some freshmen and a little under five hundred of them came. It was a great day. Then you've got teachers coming in this week, and able to see all of them yesterday, and for different staff needs, professional development. It's been a phenomenal nine days, and it's an honor to be here.
Can I say something about that, Tom?
Yeah.
Bringing in the Warren County Prosecutor, I have heard so many positive comments about that. That is just a cool thing. And I emailed Kyle about that, and I was excited to hear that you're bringing it in for the other-
Seven, this Wednesday, the seventeenth, we have our senior, junior, and sophomore things.
I just think that is awesome, absolutely awesome. So I could not be more thrilled, because I have a sophomore and a senior. So I'm thrilled that they're gonna hear what the freshman heard. So I think that is a great thing. I'd love to have him back every year. I think that's something that all of our high school kids, and probably even our junior high kids, I mean, some of what we've been dealing with is with our junior hires too. So I think that's a fabulous thing to have as part of our beginning of the year kickoff stuff. So that was an awesome idea.
All right, ten point one, executive session, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employee or official. Matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes. Do you have a motion to move into executive session? Second?
Second.
Volcom?
Anderson?
Yes.
And Desmond?
Yes.
Yes. There will be no action, though, when we come out of executive session. All right.